I have six thirty in the evening. I'd go ahead and call this meeting to order. Mr. Hall, would you lead this prayer, sir?
We bow that we are blessed and we know it. We appreciate your grace and your mercy upon us. And we pray, Lord, that you would guide the council this evening with wisdom and discernment of your will and your way for our community, the benefit of our citizens. We pray that you would open our eyes to the needs. May we be present here, not just by being in attendance, but be mentally involved and recognize our responsibilities and importance of them, and guide us, we pray, with your leadership, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please throw me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You would think I would look at that eagle before we got started, but I don't. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Hall?
Present.
Councilmember Chapman?
Present.
Councilmember Harbort is not here.
Resigned.
That's right. Councilmember Hefner?
Here.
Councilmember Brooke?
Here.
And Councilmember Rubel?
Here.
We have a quorum. Council, first thing on the agenda tonight is the review and approval of the February twentieth meeting minutes. If you've had a chance to review those, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Hearing discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council. Next on the agenda is department reports and financials that were provided to you. I'd entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Can we have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you very much. There was no planning commissioner meeting last month, had nothing for the agenda, so there was no report to be given. We'd like to invite Dr. Thurman. You're up, sir. We don't mess around, sir. Maybe I should come run your board meeting. No, no, I do not want to do that. No, no, I do not. Just so you know, you're on YouTube Live and the camera's behind you.
Okay. All right. Well, first of all, mayor and council members, I truly appreciate this time tonight. And what I would like to share is a bond proposal that the school board has put forward. And you've probably seen this on our social media pages, but I wanted to just kind of take a few minutes to go in depth with you and respectfully ask for your support of this initiative. Certainly, as a member of our school district, we value your input and support of what we're trying to do for the kids and also the staff and our communities. But real quick, what I've given you is three pieces of paper, and the first one is the bond overview, and it's just a tri-fold. And I'm speaking to different groups. I'm just kind of using different information, though it all says the same thing depending upon the audience. But I wanted to give you everything that we're using, and if you'd like to have some more, I can see there's some left over. But we have also the frequently asked questions, and all this information is on our website. And then finally, just a one-pager that I'm using with some groups as well. And also, there's a video on our website that explains the process in detail. I'm not going to go into a lot of depth about a bond restructure. As city council members, you know exactly what we're trying to do. The key to this, that we're trying to help our stakeholders understand, is that the millage rate will be thirty-nine point five, and that's what it is today. It's actually been that for fourteen years. This is my fifteenth year of superintendent, and when I took over following the Junior High North Fire, we know what the district, the financial situation of the district at that time. But for the last, and we passed a millage that next year, and we've been stable ever since, and we're still stable today. But just as a city, our school district is in a situation where we're needing just some cash to do some major projects. I think for the last fourteen years, at thirty-nine point five, we've done a good job of managing, and I'm proud of our facilities. But right now, there are just some major needs in our district. But again, let me reiterate, with this, this is not a millage increase. If it fails, the millage rate is thirty-nine point five. If it passes, the millage rate is thirty-nine point five. We're asking to restructure four bonds that the district has right now and to extend those to generate the cash. I'm sure you've done that before, and you know exactly what we're trying to do, is just get immediate cash on hand. How would we use that immediate cash on hand? Quite simply, right now, we're in a situation with our pre-Ks, and we have pre-Ks in six of our nine elementary schools. And though we've not grown exponentially, we have grown over the years, and thanks to a lot in part by Ward. You send us a lot of kids K-12, and we appreciate that. Keep them coming. But we also are in a situation, as for instance, Ward Central Elementary, Ward Central has pre-K classrooms. The state does not right now recognize those classrooms in terms of spatial utilization, so we could receive partnership funding. So we're in a situation where all of our elementary schools, our nine schools are full. We need space. So we're actually proposing two pre-K centers. Right now, we have seventeen pre-Ks across these six elementary schools, or nine total. That would open up a lot of elementary school space for the long term of the district. That would actually be more cost-effective than building a new elementary school right now. The two elementary schools, I'm sorry, the two pre-K centers, we're proposing a north and a south center. Ward will be served by the north center, and right now, the south center is proposed to be between, you're familiar with Cabot, of course, middle school south and junior high south on Panther Trail, right along Kerr Station Road and Pine Street. We own all that land in that area, and we'd like to utilize that for the south area. For the north area, most of you, you've been around here a while, you know the Fulton family in Austin. Right past the old egg crate factory, right past Cross Creek, all that land right there past the old fire station is the Fulton property. Of course, they lived in that brick house off the road there. Wonderful folks, and they called me years ago, and one of their dreams was to always have a school on that land. It's beautiful land, got a great pond there, and we bought that about a year later, after the Fultons sold us that property. That old church property right there came open, and we bought that, and that's now the Austin Training Center, and that kind of gives you some perspective on what we're talking about. But we're also proposing our pre-K center that would serve Ward to be in that location. As part of the pre-K centers in both locations, we'll be able to expand the programs. We're going to design these specifically for pre-K. Right now, with our pre-K programs, those kids are in retrofitted elementary classrooms. We want to use those classrooms for K-4, but build these two centers. And as part of that, I've talked to the mayor, we will actually put a storm room in that. And of course, for the city of Ward, that would be accessible right down the road to use for the citizens of Ward if they chose to do so. But in the evenings and weekends, when the school's not in use, it would be one of those systems in place where when the storm warnings go off, you can just pop the doors, and people can certainly utilize that facility. Also considering a district daycare facility, I know in Ward, Austin, Cabot, we have an issue finding daycare space. If you try to find daycare space, you know you're on a waiting list automatically for almost every center. So one of the things we'd like to do is, right now, the Cabot Learning Academy is located across from Northside Elementary School on Locust Street. That building, that's housing a program, that there's no program like that in our state. A few years ago, the state came in and looked at that program, and it was so unique, they'd like to use that as an example for how to work with kids who have some challenges. Most districts, those challenged kids are put on buses and taken to Little Rock for day services, but we keep those in-house. But they have helped us pay for a building that'll actually open in January of twenty-four, and it's located on Polk Street, next to the tennis center, the tennis complex, which is adjacent to the freshman academy. With that, that building that used to be a daycare center, both of mine are in college now, both of my kids, but they both went to daycare in that facility across from Northside. And we'd like to renovate that back into a daycare facility. We're estimating thirty, forty, fifty seats. It depends on the age of the kids, on how many kids you can have in a classroom. But if we can't, if we can take some kids out of our daycares, it would actually open some space for people that need daycare space in our communities. And you know, with starter families coming to our areas, once, one of the things they look for is childcare. So if we could open some seats there, that would be for district faculty and staff. We can't hold them all. We average about twenty-five to thirty maternity leaves a year with our staff members, about eight-hundred-and-fifty certified staff and about seven-hundred classified staff. We have about fifteen-hundred-and-fifty contracts out right now, with people employed by the Cabot School District. So a district daycare facility in that location. Our field house has been there for, since, what, two thousand and four, and with no renovation. And for those who've played football in Cabot, you know anything about our athletic program? Mike Malham did a great job, but Mike Malham didn't want to even toss you a football, much less pass it. So we built that field house years and years ago, and it's thirty-five yards indoors. If you know about football, thirty-five yards is not a lot of room when you're trying to actually conduct a practice inside. So what we're looking at doing is, we're about ninety lockers short with our kids right now in football. Yes. We have about ninety kids that do not have a locker. So that locker was built, that room was built with about a hundred, and right now, we have about a hundred-seventy, hundred-seventy-five kids on the roster. I think it's a good thing that kids want to be a part of something. So we also have an issue with our training. We actually have the best training program, and I do speak about our district with great pride. And one of the things that we have that's very unique is an athletic training program. It takes care of our athletes, it's proactive for athletes, but it saves our public a lot of money when you don't have to get physical therapy every time your child has an injury. Right now, they're in a space that's three-hundred square feet. We'd like to move them downstairs to our weight room. That would actually triple their space, expand our training room, our track locker room as well. We're out of track space on the first floor of that three-story facility. On the backup to the second floor of the facility, we would actually move the training room, make it a storage area for our offices, and then expand the locker room into the turf room, move the weight room upstairs to the turf room, and then you're asking, why don't you lose the turf room? We do, but we can't use it now anyway. We would keep some of that turf room, and then across the street there on Bellamy Street, next door to the bus garage on the old Putt property, now the district owns, if you start down, if you go up Bellamy Street, most remember the Elliott House on the left. We got that property two years ago from the Eliots, so we have that. And then if you go up Bellamy Street, that was where the Putt property was, and that goes all the way to the transportation center, and then around behind the transportation center, over to Main Street. Well, Ms. Putt sold us that property, and then she has actually kept ten acres, and if you go down Main Street, she's built that house right down behind East Side. We do not own the other part of the property, which is the original Bellamy property, but we do own all of Bellamy, so you already see that we're expanding our track area. We added a band practice area outside, next to Champ's Hall. If you come up Pine Street to the left, it's where the old grass area used to be. Band needed a place to practice. That's eighty yards where they can have an outdoor area as well. So we've actually made a shot discus area there on Bellamy Street, but between there is a parking lot. Strategically, we put gravel down, didn't pave that. We've let it pack because we're dealing with red clay, you know what we deal with here. And we like to build a practice pavilion. And when I say practice pavilion, what we mean is that it's a covered structure with an indoor practice facility, but it's, the walls do not meet the ground, and that way, you don't have to sprinkle it, and you don't have to do any of the fire suppression equipment, and basically, you save about five to six million dollars, to be honest with you. No HVAC involved. Basically, it's just a practice field with a cover. We have someone who's willing to help us with that steel cover structure, and you're saying, why is this necessary? We have the practice field, we have the game field, but we also have bands, soccer, football, spring practice, track, everyone using that same field. And we actually lose more practice days for band and for football in the fall for heat because of the summer practices. Of course, we use the wet bulb. When that wet bulb hits the alarm, those kids have to quit, and that's the right thing to do. But if we practice under a cover with the, out of the sun, we can actually get more practice time for the band as well. And of course, in the spring, it can be used by multiple sports. So that would take care of this district for the long term. Another project is, this is where we started with Ward Central. We actually did a pilot, a couple pilot classrooms. During COVID, one of the things that they were wanting to consider is to get rid of carpet. I didn't realize how bad carpet was until I actually saw some removed from some classrooms. So we had a couple teachers at Ward Central that were eager to volunteer to have the carpet removed. So we've actually tried some stained concrete in some of the classrooms, and those teachers have really appreciated that stained concrete to get rid of that. I'll just be honest with you, we have some carpet in some of our classrooms across the district that have been there thirty, forty years, and it really needs to come up. This will be about eight to nine thousand dollars a classroom. We're looking at either stained concrete or the option of VT. But we've done a couple pilot classrooms, and we're actually seeing better attendance in the classroom with students and with faculty, and especially those that have allergy issues. So this will be, it's a large expenditure, but this would take care of that for the long term, to be able to remove that from all the classrooms in our school district. You already know about inclusive classrooms. We are a draw for parents in central Arkansas for children with special needs in the Cabot School District because we offer so many programs. One of the things that I've always wanted to have, and if you talk about inclusive playground structures, you look at what the city of Cabot has put on Ritchie Road, and then they put one right behind the city hall. It's basically a playground structure that's made for handicapped children and kids with sensory needs. The reason that's important, I think we need to consider that as part of this package, and I'm excited to move forward on this with a positive vote, is during the day, we can take those kids out that have some sensory issues, and these structures are built where they can actually, it's tactile, it's structures, where they can actually be on the structure and gain as well. But then, most important, during recess, they can go out and play, and they have something, if they're in a wheelchair, if they're on crutches, they can actually get out and participate with recess as well. So we like to put one of those structures. They run about eighty to a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars each, depending on the structure, at all nine elementary schools and the two middle schools. We would like to place interactive technology in all the classrooms. Right now, we have the smart boards. We have some interactive panels, but we'd like to put those in every single classroom, and those are seventy-five-inch interactive panels. Those last about eight to ten years. And that would be great for the kids to actually to go up, and they are very manipulative. You can move things around on the board, and it also makes it where classroom engagement is really amplified. And then finally, at the auditorium, I don't know if you've ever been to one of our shows, we have the most amazing band. We have incredible dance classes. We have, all of our kids build the sets for every musical that we do. The kids build the sets. They run the lights, they run the sound. But that auditorium now is about thirteen, twelve, thirteen years old, and what we're finding is, we're having some issues. We did this last spring show, and I was, I felt okay about it, but we're to the point where we're going to have to close that facility. It's got the old light bulbs in it, the old halogen light bulbs, and everyone is telling us, you can't even get, we're finding out because they're overheating, and we can't get parts for them, is those old bulbs are popping now, and you can't find the parts, replace it. And everyone that does this type of technology is saying, you must go with LED. That's the way to go. It costs a lot more on the front end, but it'll save you money on the back end because you don't have to constantly replace those, and they're just going to be much better for the facility. And also for the sound, the sound system is antiquated. And like I told you, our kids run the lights and sound for all of our shows, and also, our community members use that auditorium almost every single weekend. So we're at a point where we need to do something with the light and sound in that as well, and that's about six to seven-hundred thousand dollars. So that's the entire package. It's about forty, forty-one million dollars worth of projects. You, as a city council, you understand why we're doing it this way. We don't want to raise the millage. But if we can generate enough money, then we're actually going to be in good shape in terms of cash flow. The one thing I would like to bring your attention to is, if you look on page two of this staple packet, in terms of managing the finances of the school district, like I told you, fifteen years ago, it was a challenging situation with the Junior High North Fire and then some insurance issues. For those that have been around, you know exactly what happened back then. But if you'll look on that second page, and there's actually a little chart with a yellow line across the top. I'd like to bring your attention to that, just to understand where the Cabot School District is. We're expected to have, we compete against other districts, and we want people to be in our district. We want to be able to take care of kids. But in terms of managing our district financially, that first column just lists some of the seven A larger school districts that we are basically compared to. That next line shows our current debt. I'm sorry, our current enrollment. That's about ten thousand, two forty-three. But then the next line, you see that in the state of Arkansas, Cabot's actually considered one of the poorest school districts, and that's because of our assessment. As a city council, you know, you know the challenges that come with that as well. But we look at who we need to be competing with, but I think we do really well with the amount of money that we generate. You see, our millage rate is actually one of the lowest of the seven A districts. Our assessment's one of the lowest. But also, look at our current debt in the school district, and that's something I'm very proud of, is we've done a lot of projects over the years. And right now, you see where our debt stands at around forty-nine million dollars, and then you look at comparable school districts. You see the hundred-and-seventy, you see the four-hundred-and-twenty, you see the three-hundred, three-hundred thousand. So that column, that chart speaks for itself and shows how much our school board has done over the years to make sure they weren't adding more debt to the school district. But it's, we're at a point where these capital projects, we do need these funds. So with that said, again, I appreciate your time. We are asking for a good vote on May the ninth, and just as we've done in the past fifteen years, we'll manage the money and do a good job with that, and take care of our kids and staff and communities, and with this proposal, we will continue to do so. Any questions? I'd be glad to answer.
Very good, Dr. Thurman. Appreciate it. Just also to make you aware, we have also an all-exclusive playground now at our city park.
And that's it. And you see how popular those have become, and that is awesome that you have one as well?
And they're not cheap. You're right.
They are not cheap, and we'd love to have eleven of those for our kids. So, council members, thank you for this opportunity to share. If you ever have any questions for us, or if you would like to come tour some of these facilities, just to kind of visually see exactly what we're talking about doing, I would love to personally just give you a tour and see exactly what the proposal is, or if there's anything else in our school district. You're key members of our school system. It's all of your students here in Ward attend our schools. And we want to make sure that you know you're always welcome. If you have questions or concerns, I'm always accessible. Just let me know. You know, so if you'd just like a tour anytime, if not only Ward Central, of any of our schools where your students attend, I would personally love to give that to you. So thank you again for this opportunity. Thank you, mayor.
Good. Well, we'll be talking more about that millage rate at that election as it gets closer, but very good presentation. Next up on the agenda is unfinished business. And first on the unfinished business is ordinance two thousand and twenty-three dash zero-two. If you'd read the title, please?
An ordinance amending city of Ward ordinance two thousand and fourteen dash zero-seven and for other purposes.
If you remember, council, this is the ordinance we've been pushing through for a little bit, the change of due date and a couple other things on the water bill. I provided you a letter that, timely, that Mr. Lacy had to reply to a AG complaint, in which he talked about what we've been trying to do, and how this will, I think, we think, solve a lot of problems with the water bill. I do still have the slides available if we need to run through the billing and all that, but if we need to.
I would like to see the complaint.
We had, it was to Mr. Lacy. I didn't get it. Ms. Lacy? We get, we get AG complaints routinely.
I'll probably answer, I don't know, one or two a month, probably. This is not the first time I've had complaints about this particular portion of the water bill, but it's the first time I've had one since we started talking about restructuring the water bill. And basically, the complaint was, this gentleman's name was Sean Golden. He is a retired veteran, I think he's a disabled veteran, and he was late on his water bill, and he got a late notice, and he got his second water bill, and basically, it said due on the tenth, and so he had to pay two months plus the fifty-dollar reconnection fee, and that was his issue. He didn't feel that it was fair, so forth and so on. Of course, my response was, we're trying, council has been talking about, mayor's been proposing to change the structure of this water bill to where the late fee was going down, I'm sorry, late fee, the reconnect fee, decreasing to twenty-five dollars rather than fifty, and that you would have, obviously, you've got to pay the full bill before your water's reconnected, but that would be done before the second month bill went out. So you're paying one month plus your twenty-five dollars, and you're back on the water rather than two, which obviously, you know, if he was late, and I pointed that out, you know, that the current rules are, you're late on your bill, you pay the reconnect fee, two months, it is what it is. Until that gets changed, and we're certainly mindful of that, and we're sorry, and we're, you know, we're empathetic to that. But those are the rules that it stands right now, and I encouraged him to come to city council meeting and talk to you guys about it. We hadn't had anybody show up yet talk about this. Of course, that was very short notice. I just answered this complaint Thursday, I think. So maybe he shows up next month and gets on the agenda. I don't know, but that was the basis of it.
What you're saying is, since June of last year, when this was brought up, you had any complaints suffered this one?
Not about the due dates of the billing. I have in the past, but not since the city council started talking about this.
Since June of last year?
Most of the complaints are about my bill being higher than I think it should be. You know, and then what we do is, we pull their usage history, and inevitably, almost every time, we see where their usage went up.
So for me, you're talking about forty-four hundred connections, service connections for the water.
Right.
You know, and last month, we were told that between eighty to ninety lock offs a month.
Right.
Then, but also, you have about twenty-five to thirty, that's routine on most of the time.
Recurring?
Recurring. So you take the recurring away from the ninety or so, that's every month. You only come with sixty, basically.
Okay.
So sixty lock offs out of forty-four hundred service connections is only one percent of the service connections. So you wanted to revamp the whole thing for less, for one percent of the population of the service connections?
We want to revamp the whole thing for a couple reasons. One in particular is, it makes more sense and falls in line with the other utilities around us. Also, when the confusion comes into play, and I think, Mr. Hall, you ran into this situation. You did too? Okay. It's confusing, that billing statement is confusing after a second month of, it says it's due the tenth. In fact, it is due before then. This just clarifies that, makes it simpler to understand, and, like I said, falls in line with the other utilities around us.
But again, you're talking about one percent.
Sure. But it's changed for the better.
I don't think it's just talking about the lock offs, the people that get disconnected. It's, when I first moved here, I got my bill, and then I got another bill. I was confused. I thought I had time to pay it. I ended up having to pay two bills plus the reconnect fee, and I just moved in my house and had outlaid lots of money to do that already. And then on top of that, I had to pay two water bills at one time. It put me in a bind there for a minute. I don't think it's specifically about the shut offs. It's just streamlining the process, making it more understandable and less confusing when you get your water bill. That's the way I see it.
Well, the way I see it too is, it saves the citizens money by the reconnect being twenty-five rather than fifty.
Yeah, it was their money, but then you hurt the city. Revenue for water, for maintenance program, for maintenance, they got it for the water, water system, stuff like that. But yet, you also put a tax on the internet infrastructure. You also put a four-point-two-five percent tax net to compensate for this.
Not compensate for this, no.
But isn't that tax on the franchise? It's not on the people, is it?
It's passed through to the people, just like your cable bill now is, or your electric bill, or your water bill, or your gas bill, all have franchise fees that are passed through.
We jumped around here. Are we talking about water, or are we talking about internet?
We're talking about water.
Okay. So let me, my point on that, my thinking on this is, one percent is what this.
Your honor.
If one percent is only people that per se is going to be affected by this, then it helps that one percent because the other ninety-nine percent, or we'll say ninety-eight percent, is paying their bill as they should or whatever. So if it simplifies the billing for one person in the city, then I don't see an issue with it.
I was wondering, where are we, where are we losing revenue? I guess I missed that somewhere. Are you trying to say that charging people fifty dollars to reconnect is costing us revenue? I mean, by dropping it down to twenty-five dollars? Is that what you're trying to say?
It's also fifty dollars in the water that's turned, cost of the water bill, and what twenty-five dollars means.
Yeah, but it's not an issue of revenue, because we couldn't Yeah, but it's not an issue of revenue, because we couldn't see punishing people who's a revenue, I wouldn't think.
Well, we can't use that stream against a bond issue.
Right.
Late fees, reconnect fees, no. Those are variables that change every month, anyway.
The only thing I really have to say is, could we get the complaint next time, if you give us one of these?
Actually, the city does have it. It comes through them first before it comes to me. So, Nikki, I'm sorry, Nikki, probably Corr, I don't know who sends it to me, I think the Water Department sends it to me. So it's there.
Brittany, well, I think you got this one directly from the AG's office. We didn't get this one all quarter Brittany.
No, no, you got it there first, yeah. Because I was actually late in answering, and I got a second five-day period to do it.
Well, I'm just saying whoever.
Yeah, whenever, if we break one of these again.
Yeah, but that's no problem.
Yeah, we can do that, but it was just a, just today, he showed this to me, as we were going through, there were some other things, and I thought, this needs to be, you need to see that this is not just us talking, this is a reality, reality.
I make a motion, we vote on the ordinance.
Okay. You have a motion to approve the second reading?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call, please. Let me ask you this, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Yea.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke?
No.
And Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand twenty-three zero-two has passed its second reading.
Make a motion to suspend the rules, put it on the third reading.
We have a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Hearing one opposed, motion carries. Entertained a motion to put ordinance two thousand twenty-three zero-two for adoption.
Motion.
We have a motion to adopt. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adopt ordinance two thousand twenty-three zero-two. Call or roll, please.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke?
No.
Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash zero-two passes. Just confirm. This ordinance will take effect thirty days, take effect next billing cycle, thirty days after this ordinance is properly posted, a, a emergency clause is not needed. Thank you, council. Next up on the agenda is the second reading for ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash zero-three. Would you read the title, please?
An ordinance establishing a franchise tax for fiber optic services within the corporate city of Ward, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
As we talked about last month, with the introduction of fiber optics in the city from a couple of different agencies, more and more people probably go into fiber optics, which decreases number of bodies, number of accounts for cable TV, which does have a five percent franchise fee on it. This is a authorized by state law, gives us another revenue stream that we're losing. Over the floor for comments.
I am against anything that raises taxes on the citizens.
Okay.
What does this do with the current cable? Do we, everybody knows it's going away and drastically?
Turn your mic on.
Knows that it's going away and drastically dropping every month. What does it do for that tax? Does it get away with?
It doesn't do away with tax at all. Would you raise your mic up a little bit, I think, to get some feedback for whatever reason? No, it doesn't do away with any franchise fee that's already in place. So, anybody who continues to have cable TV or cable internet, no, excuse me, cable TV, the internet portion, that is not taxed.
Say that one more time.
Cable TV will, you, you, no franchise fees are taken away. People who have, still have cable will pay the franchise fee.
It'll still be in place.
Yeah, it'll still be in place. This just allows us to put a franchise fee on fiber optics, which more and more people are going to. And helps to, it won't be one-for-one, obviously, but helps us recoup some of the revenues that are going to be lost by people getting out of cable.
What is the rate that you're proposing?
It's four-point-two-five, which is the max.
Is there any way we can lower that rate?
Oh, absolutely. That's the max allowed by state law, unless contracted, which is how the cable's at five percent.
How many other cities have imposed this tax?
A lot of them are going to it. This is new.
I mean, have imposed it as of right now?
I have no idea. I do know that we've talked about this in certain meetings in municipal league and, and other cities are looking at. Other cities also throughout the country are doing this, and they're trying to tax subscriber services, Netflix and things like that, but that's probably not going to happen. That just, there's some court issues on that. But certainly, by approved by municipal league, and, and Mr. Lacy's also looked at this, with certainly within our authority to do this.
What's, what's the rate for the cable right now?
Five.
Five percent?
Right. In order to get five, we'd have to end, actually enter a contract with Connect Two First to do that, and certainly don't need, I don't think. Same thing with, if you recall, several months ago, I think it was last year, we, we did ordinance to, to re-implement franchise tax that had not been properly introduced to the central, to the gas company and electric company. Many, many years ago, there was an ordinance to raise the franchise fees to four percent, I believe it was, and never got passed on to the companies, and we discovered that. So we did an ordinance to fully implement it, put them on notice that, okay, this was passed in two thousand fourteen, I believe it was, but you were never put on notice, so there's nothing we can do about that, but going forward, here's what your franchise fee is going to be. And, of course, they, they've implemented, it's a pass-through, yes. But I can't, I mean, I, I can't tell you how much revenue we lost in that seven years or whatever without raising taxes.
Is any, what is the average end cost to internet subscriber with this four-and-a-quarter tax?
Well, do the math, a century, Connect Two First, two-hundred megabyte, I believe, is sixty-nine, or sixty-five, sixty-four ninety-nine, what is it?
I'm over five hundred, it's sixty-nine ninety-nine.
Okay. So sixty-nine ninety-nine.
Three dollars.
How much?
Three dollars and something.
Okay.
But this, this franchise fee is just a fee they pay for the use of the, of the right-of-way?
That's correct, by law.
Other companies are paying it?
Gas companies, electric companies, water.
Yeah.
Water company, we pay franchise fees to the city.
So they're using the same right-of-way?
Exactly.
But right now, they're not paying for it.
Correct. And this also includes, not just Connect Two First, but Bright Speed has fiber optics in town. They're talking about, fact is, SubLink, or Optimal, what they're called, they're talking about bringing fiber optics also, and then, oh, the place of BB, who has BBs? I forget, I forget the name. Anyway, they're talking, they had talked at one time about trying to bring fiber optics down into, into Ward. So, it's just not the Connect Two First, it's whoever. This will affect, this will be applicable to whoever brings fiber optics to the city.
So it comes up to about three dollars a month per, per citizen?
I know that I paid, and when I was having a full cable TV and internet and whatever packages I had, I looked, and I was paying ten dollars a month, over ten dollars a month in franchise fee to cable, for one-hundred megabytes.
I think we're going to see...
It's two dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Okay.
We're going to see a big decline, I mean, we've already saw a decline, but we're going to see a continued growth.
I'm not sure we can quantify that, because I don't know who's dropped it, or just who hasn't signed up, who's moved in. You know, I don't know how we can qualify that. Although, you know, I provided last time with some stats on the amount of income we had been getting from cable.
Yeah, the decline.
Is that in there? Okay. And it's declining. And again, I don't know if it's declining because people are getting out of cable, or just not signing up.
I think that's pretty common.
Yeah, that's it, yeah. Twenty thousand dollars over the last, during two thousand twenty-two.
Well, I know as soon as the Connect Two gets hooked up on my side over there, I'm going to drop cable.
We have dropped it here at City Hall. We're now on, a couple of reasons. The main one is, is the connectivity. You have, I mean, same upload and download speed, and just matter of service, and as we, as we progress, and I just put a new Wi-Fi in my house, and looked at all the devices that are attached to it, oh my goodness, I didn't realize. Everything from my Ring cameras, of course, and Kindles, and cell phones, and phone, and smart TVs, and all those are all bandwidth, and you need good, stable bandwidth. But, that's not the point here. Any further discussion? Any public discussion? Or employee, for this fact? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-three zero-three on its second reading.
I make the motion.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Hefner?
No.
Councilmember Brooke?
No.
Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Counsel, this is a, one of those situations in which it takes four votes to pass a, any measure, ordinance resolution, and this is one of those times where, even though it's not a tie, I get to vote in order to put it over top or not. And I vote yes, to approve it for its second reading. And I would like this not to go for suspended rules. Carry it to next month, talk about it again, and vote it again next month. Moving forward, new business. As you know, Mr. Eric Ober, resigned last month, then last month, because of work commitments, would not be able to attend city council meetings as he wanted to, and, and felt it important that somebody get in a position who can do a better job of being a tenant. So, we have a vacancy in Ward Two, Position Two. I need a motion to declare the position vacant.
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Yes.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Members of public who wish to apply must live in voting Ward Two of the city of Ward as depicted on the Ward Voting Map, version two thousand twenty-three, be eligible to take the office and fill out an affidavit of eligibility. Affidavit of eligibilities are due to the city clerk by twelve noon, April seventeenth, that's our next city council meeting, and then those people will also be invited to come forward and speak to, they'll give three minutes, like some of you had, to speak to the city council, and then you all will vote on who takes that place. Thank you, council. Moving forward, ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash zero-four, read the title, please.
An ordinance establishing policy, Ward Grinder Pump Policy, for authorization, installation, use, and responsibilities of grinder pumps attached to the Ward Water and Sewer System and for other purposes.
Bruce, would you come forward, please? As you know, Bruce is our Public Works Director now, which includes water and wastewater. Explain what we're wanting to do here.
Yeah, so basically, we currently have around seventy to seventy-five grinder pits that are, the city maintains, really at no, at no charge. And so, one of the main issues we have is, with the exception of twenty-one that were installed in the Whipwell and Morrison project, with that project, we made sure we collected proper easements, the way we could access those, but the remaining fifty to fifty-five, there is no easements. And so it's, it's essentially on the homeowner, and for however long, I know, longer than I've been here, the city is taking care of those. And it's a, it's a huge cost, and probably more than seventy-five percent of the other cities out there do not maintain those, and the ones that do, it's usually a pretty big cost. And so, we're wanting to pass this here, so we do not have to maintain those and incur those costs, with the exception of projects that we do, maybe establish like a, like a five-year warranty or something on the projects that we do ourselves, like over in Whipwell and Morrison.
Right.
Are these, I guess these are house-specific?
Yes.
Yes.
This is, this is becoming the, especially out in, outlying areas, the new way to pump sewer. And they're basically a glorified, larger garbage disposal, part of the homeowners on their side of the main system.
Is there going to be some way that these homeowners will know when they purchase a house that has one of these pumps, that we can guarantee they know this?
Yeah, I mean, any current ones that have, that have went in since I've been here, that's basically what we've been telling them, anyway. It's basically theirs, it's on private property, so essentially, they own it.
The new subdivisions, up to East Main, I can't remember the name of that subdivision that BJ's done out on East Main, but anyway, they're all on grinder pumps, and part of their bill of insurance states in there, the grinder pump is your responsibility, one-hundred percent.
I mean, I would just hate to buy a house and then find out whenever it stops, it has this thing, but nobody told me.
Our intent is to, first, of course, this is passed, we'll put notice, everybody that has a current grinder pump, we'll put them on notice with a letter and a copy of the ordinance, so they'll be aware of it. And then, like I said, they're in, they're in builder assurance for new subdivisions, and we'll try to work out a procedure that, you know, we know that if so-and-so buys a house at this particular address, we know there's a grinder pump there, and they get notified through us also, get a copy of the ordinance at that time when they sign up for service.
Well, I'm definitely against the city having the responsibility of it, just, I worry about the homeowner not knowing they have the responsibility.
Yeah, we will do our best to make sure they do know their best, and then, I will tell you that other cities, they charge X amount per home and put that into an escrow that they use to draw money out to pay for the, for the pumps. But again, it's on, a lot of times, it's on private property. Then we get into an issue about going on somebody's private property, we don't have an easement, and taking care of what is essentially a piece of equipment at their house.
Bruce, what's that?
Man.
What is the average cost to replace this, or how much, how much upkeep does it require?
Well, most of the upkeep is, is labor, right? Going and checking them all the time, and that's the big cost, is labor. Labor, I mean, I can't put a number on it, but we, we spend a significant amount of time working on those. As far as, like, if a pump goes down, you know, you're talking, if you had to replace the pump, around two thousand to thirty-five hundred these days per, per pump, that we've been replacing for some time.
And they, they don't fail very often.
No, they don't, they don't.
Because they're not, they don't pump all the time. They pump when the, when the tank gets full, then they pump out. But otherwise, they just sit there.
Yeah, and one of the other issues is, a lot of problems you tend to have are electrical. So we have guys doing electrical work on private property, which is, is a big issue, so.
Problematic.
Help me understand, because I don't know much about them, I don't understand what you're talking about. So, so these are waste disposable things that help with the waste, but they, so they're not pumping straight into the sewer system, is that?
No, they do pump into the sewer system.
After they're, after they're...
Yes, it's typically a pit, and, and they vary in size from thirty-some odd gallons to, some, some are as large as a hundred gallons, and it's got a, it's got a pump in it that is a grinder pump, and so it, it grinds up their wastewater into a slurry, pumps it through a... it, it grinds up their wastewater into a slurry, pumps it through a small, low-pressure force main, which is their service line, and then it ties into our line, our force main.
So, are we requiring that? Or, I guess I'm trying, trying to figure out why they, some people have them and others don't?
Well, so in some, yeah, so in, in some areas, so you try to go gravity when you can, but there's a lot of areas where elevation doesn't exist to do gravity, and that's the next best option.
Okay.
So, it's basically a septic on a house fills up, it pumps out into the main?
Yeah, I mean, to some degree. You could, you could look at it as, it's just a small pit, you know?
Well, I have a question. Can we not send out a notice to these people who own these and have them be aware that we're voting on this, so they can show up possibly for the next City Council meeting?
Well, we could do that, but that's what the wishes of the council are.
It's basically the same way as it is with the, your sewer line coming from your house, your ground out, coming from your house to the sewer line. Either you connect the Connect Two to some, you got the ground, you get to go up to the main, sewer main, the same principle, pretty much. Your, the homeowner is responsible for that portion until it gets hooked up to the main.
Right.
So, once it gets hooked to the main, then it's the city's. But until then, it's on, it's on the, it's on the homeowner's property, it's the homeowner. So, it's just gonna be on same principle.
Yeah, technically, what we own is like, when a collection point becomes shared, that becomes community, and that becomes ours. And so, you know, if it's a, you know, a residential home, individual home that's got a grinder pit and a service line, technically, we don't own that. We own from the common point, the, where it becomes community at that point.
I'd like Charles's idea about the notice going out to the people that have these, and let them come talk to us. If nobody shows up, then we make, we do the decision.
How old are most of them?
They vary. There's probably, there's some that I know 15 years, and then, you know, some as few as a couple of years. So, the, the main thing is, is the ones that are out there, you know, we, we don't actually own it, but we're working on it. We're working on private property, and it's, they, they do it because it's just something that they've always done.
We checked prior to working this up, and looked at our files, contacted Mayor Brooke and some others. You know, is there something we're missing? Is this, you know, there was an ordinance passed, there was a resolution, there was a line item in a, in a medium, something that allowed for this, you know, that we're gonna continue to provide this service forever. And there wasn't, and we're getting to the point, now we've gotten to the point, that we have to put something in writing to put, to make sure the city is covered. These that we had put in under the Whipperwill Sewer Project, where we pulled them off vacuum, or, you know, pulled them off vacuum, those we'll, we'll cover, because we, we forced them to do that. Got easements, got authorization, put breakers in their houses for this particular thing. But the faint of five years, it's theirs to, to maintain. Right now, we're working off a, well, I think we're responsible for it. I don't know if we're responsible for it. There's nothing in writing that says we're not responsible for it, so who's responsible for it? And this is why we're trying to put this in writing, to make sure that going forward, those who have it, those who get it, will understand what the rules are. I don't have a problem with your, with your idea of putting them on notice that we are looking in on this, see what folks say.
Who supplies the power? Does the city supply the power to these, or does the residents supply it?
Residents.
Yeah, technically, it's theirs, they own it.
That's right.
I think they just kind of maintained it out of, out of courtesy.
Just like their garbage disposal.
Well, I was, I was, I mean, the city's been maintaining it, I just, it popped in my head, who's paying for the electricity to these? If it's the homeowner, then they...
It's no different than a rec.
Right. That's exactly right. It's the exact same thing. And, and like you said, occasionally, our guys have had to do some electrical work on those. That's problematic. Well, there's some liability. And again, we are on private property, which we're, you know, we're, I'm really skeptical about keeping people off private property, doing something for folks. And this is, it's because this puts people on notice of who's responsible for what.
Do what? Various, the South State Coach Project, a lot of that stuff through there. It's just minor stuff, like control panel issues, you know, stuff like that, but that's, that's really the most common, issues with floats, things like that, pretty much everywhere, other than the, the Whipperwill Morrison side, which we haven't had any issues out of. But a lot of that Ward South stuff is getting, getting pretty old as well, so we're, we're starting to have more, more and more issues.
And those of you who are somewhat newer, whatever, the Ward South project, you know, that brought sewer to, down to my area, I got it out of that, and there's a lot of issues with that contractor who put that in. In fact, it was the city in the council contract and had to finish the project themselves because of some issues, and called the performance bond in and things like that. So, we, and I say we have issues, we have potential for issues, I guess, but they're just getting old. 15 years, and they just come time. But beyond that, this is just an attempt, not an attempt, this is a, we have to set down some rules, some laws, on who's responsible for what. We can't just continue to go on and then all the south, you know, sewer projects start failing, and we're out $3,000, $5,000 for, you know, a pump and the labor and everything like that on somebody's private property again.
Yeah, as it stands, without easements and stuff, we shouldn't even be stepping foot on that property.
Mr. Chapman, do you have a motion? No, I say we do a motion to vote with the, can we stipulate that notice goes out?
Right, we can, what we can do is make a motion to approve it on its first reading with the contingency that the city sends out a notice to everybody that we know of that hasn't, and we'll post it on our social media platforms also, that this, and we'll post this draft ordinance out there, so everybody can see it, and then see what happens. And then that way, we're, we're one step into the process, and next month, we get some people in here to talk, or not, and then we'll, y'all make a decision, go forward from there. So, I'm kind of paraphrasing. Is that your motion? Okay.
I make the motion for that.
Well, a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2023-4 on its first reading with a contingency, not a contingency, but a, a part of the motion that we sent out a notice, put on social media, and advise folks of what's going on. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brooke?
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-04 passes first reading, and we will get those notices out soon. Thank you, Mr. Bruce.
Yes, sir.
Next on the agenda is ordinance 2023-05. Would you read the, the title, please?
An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute the Intergovernmental Agreement Creating the Little Rock Air Force Base Regional Planning Committee, Identifying City of Ward Officials to the Committee and for Other Purposes.
This is a, you know, interlocal agreement, be signed by county judges, city, city mayors across the area, in conjunction with working out with Little Rock Air Force Base, and sure, it's, spaces are, are kept safe, and, and we don't build in and things like that. It's a regional committee. What I need to do, if, if this is approved, going forward, we need to, I'll tell you upfront, we need to weigh the rules if we're gonna go forward with this, and we do need to go forward with this. This is just a authorization for me to sign the agreement to help form, to form this committee, and then be a part of it.
Mayor, can you explain a little bit about what they're doing? Is this like their betterment of the soldiers type deal?
No, this is, okay, the actual agreement. This is a long, drawn-out process, has been going on for, well, I think, you know, I've been to it, Chris has been to a few of the meetings. This is use and protection of the airspace of Little Rock Air Force Base and of the drop zones that support the base and for Camp Robinson. A coordinated effort with the various agencies around to ensure that, for us in particular, we only have a little bitty portion that's inside a, this zone, they call it, remember the terminology, that if somebody wanted to go out there and build a 400-foot structure, we'd have to make sure that the, and I'm saying 400-foot, whatever it is, I think it's above 200-foot, we have to make sure that the base is aware of it and coordinate through them. Doesn't affect us so much, but we are a part of it because we are in their, their zones, like applied zone, maintenance zone, crash zone. But they have to have this, we need the authorization to approve this tonight, so I can sign and get it to them, because they have a deadline also by the federal government.
I'll make a motion.
How does, how does this affect the guys with the little plane things that they take off at the?
Yeah, they won't know that, but that's, this is structures.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, just structures. We have a motion, we have a second. Any public comment? Call roll, please.
Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
And Councilmember Brooke?
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-05 has been approved for its first reading. I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules on a second and third reading.
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2023-05. We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call, please, to approve. Rob?
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rubel?
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-05 is approved. Do not need the emergency clause that'll go into effect in 30 days, and that's within their window for me to sign the contract. Thank you, Counsel. Next on the agenda is ordinance 2023-06. Would you read the title, please?
An Ordinance Requiring the Registration of Non-O owner Occupied Short-Term Rental Facilities Within the City Limits of Ward, Declaring an Emergency and for Other Purposes.
Counsel, if you remember, I talked about this last month, legislation's trying to, well, they tried to completely take away cities' ability to regulate short-term rentals at all. I went down and, and sat through a committee meeting with it, and there was a lot of opposition to that. They came back, they revised it, they've done some other things. This ordinance that I proposed implements what is allowed in that state law if it is approved. And if you remember, if you read the, the ordinance, the act in the ordinance is blank, because I don't know what it's gonna be. Okay. No?
So, you're wanting us to vote on something that we don't really know what it's even gonna say, right? Yet?
Well, it says what it, yeah.
Hasn't passed yet.
Hasn't passed yet, but...
But there's lots of changes that can happen.
Then we won't pass it, because it's on what this is. What this ordinance says is what is in the, in the law at this time. If something significantly changes, then no, you know, validates this ordinance, then we'll, we'll void it. But, in going through the meetings and setting, well, the fact is, it is being read and committed tomorrow, there's no comment, it'll pass out of committee, it's already been passed by the Senate, and it'll be passed by the House, and this has become law. This allows for, like we said in the ordinance, a permitting process. We added, or I added, owner, non-owner operated, because if you have a house and you want to rent a room, and you live in there, and that's one of the arguments on the state level, you live in it, and you want to rent a room, that's on you. You take that responsibility. The deal is, though, we have lots of non-necessary, per se, here in this city, although we do have a couple of Airbnbs here. They don't live there. We don't know where they live, who the owner is. We're getting larger cities that have corporations who are buying a bunch of houses and making short-term rentals. This also, this also regulates short-term rentals down to 30 days or less. If it's above 30 days and it's not a short-term rental, it's a lease situation. This allows us to gather a permit, allows us to charge up to $50 for a permit annually, and it allows us to gather information, such as who's responsible at 2:00 in the morning, when the short-term rental people start throwing chairs out the window, because it's not their house, and they don't care. That's some of the horror stories that the legislature has learned about. This ordinance will not go into effect unless that act is, is passed. If it's, if it's withdrawn, not passed, then this doesn't go into effect at all.
The, I have a question.
Sure.
In the ordinance, it says that the judge would set the, the fine. I thought the City Council was responsible for setting the ordinance fines.
Greg?
The legislature would be responsible for setting fines, except if this is an ordinance, well, it'd be no different than a fines that this council sets and puts in an ordinance for...
Right.
We had, what was it, the waste cleanup, the, the blocking of the ditches, where, I don't know, I don't remember if that passed or not, but anyway.
It did not.
We set, we can set fines like that in an ordinance, yes. Now, if there's a state imposed, like a legislature passes and imposes a fine, we have to go by what they, what they let. We can go less, we can go less than their amount, but we can't go over their amount, right?
But I thought there was a minimum that a judge can, or maximum that a judge can do on any city ordinance.
I'm sure there is. I'm sure I don't remember it.
What we can do is, you know, we can, we can modify this, we can send it back for, for the research. I mean, yeah, this needs to be done at some point in time, but I truly believe, if it's not done tonight, that's fine, you know. The act is going to pass, I believe, but, you know, we can go back, we can look and see what fine we want to impose, if...
Yeah, I just thought it was the city's responsibility to set city ordinance fines.
It seems like there's a...
So, I'm thinking of like the, we have an unsafe driving ordinance. That's, that's not a reckless driving charge under Arkansas State Criminal Code, but it's a civil violation. It's a civil penalty, and it's like $100 or $150. We could look at some of those others and see what we've done, but obviously, I'm sure there is a cap on what the, what the judge can impose.
So, let me, let me do this. Let me pull it back. I'll pull this back, we'll see about a fine. This also gives us time to see if it's going forward with legislation, and come back next month with this. Fair enough? Okay. No, I'm pulling it out. You know what, it's, for, yeah, somebody do a motion to table to next month.
Motion.
All right, we have a motion seconded table to next month. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good.
Next on the agenda is a resolution, Resolution 2023-07. Would you read the title, please?
A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Use One or More of the Listed-Below Architect Firms for Architectural Services.
Counsel, if you remember, each of you are involved in a different committee. This is the agricultural, not agriculture, architectural committee that you approved, and we took the top four and put it in the ordinance, and they are in order, we're architects, Lock, B and Associates, Rival Architects, and WDD Architects. And those would be who I would contact in order, and then it's by state statute, it's my responsibility to work out a, a, what is the best interest of the city payment on this. I need a, any comment? Discussion? Pretty well discussed out. I need a motion to approve Resolution 2023.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-07 is approved, thank you, council. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2023-08, would you read the title, please?
Resolution Designating Nonprofit Agency As The Community Development Block Grant Administrator.
There's an opportunity, council, for a community development block grant, up to $500,000. What we're proposing, what we're looking at, is authorization to, we have, I forget how many houses still on the vacuum system, and so we're looking at a community development block grant of $500,000 to work that, that program. We're also at the same time going to A and R D, Arkansas Natural Resources Division, and asking for the remainder amount, because the estimated cost is 1.2 million, the remainder amount, to pull the rest of the houses off the vacuum system.
Can I make a motion for sec, uh, wait, go with it, yeah.
Well, first, it is Resolution Designating Nonprofit, CAPDD, who ministers a lot of our programs for us, including the ARPA money already. So, that's your, that's your motion to approve that?
Yes, anything with grant in it, unless of course it's a net.
We have a motion, we need discussion. Hearing none, second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-08 is approved, thank you, council. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2023-09, would you please read the title?
A resolution authorizing the mayor and/or city clerk to register the city of Ward and/or the Ward Water and Sewer System with the Law Firm of Napoli...
Uh huh.
PLCLC for the purposes of representing the city of Ward and/or the Ward Water and Sewer System in...
Ray.
Aquous Film Forming Foams Products Liability Litigation.
Council, this was a...
Mouthful.
Mouthful, beginning with, it was an email we got from Municipal League General Counsel wanting all cities to join in on this lawsuit. Won't cost us anything. It's basically, it's, it's from the A triple F Products Liability Litigation, but it's PFAS, and it said, let me just read what is PFAS, which is what this amounts to. It says, "Last few years, communities throughout the country have discovered that their water and soil is contaminated with a class of chemicals known as PFAS," and it's long words, so just take me, it's PFAS.
Fire retardant, said that.
Well, that, yes. PFAS are extremely persistent in environment and resistant to tropical environmental degradation processes, study of associated PFASs with serious health issues, including kidney and testicular cancer, decreased birth weight, thyroid disease, decreased sperm quality, high cholesterol, pregnancy-induced hypertension, asthma, ultracolitis, colitis, and depressed response to vaccination. While this contamination can be traced to several sources, the primary culprit is commercial fire suppressant known as AAA triple F. AAA triple F has been decades at airports and used in high volumes on military bases. As a result, runoff of AAA triple F has contaminated the water system in and around these military installations, going back to what we talked about earlier. But PFAS can be found in more common sources as well, including cosmetics, pesticides, nonstick cookware, stain-resistant products, cleaning products, and even food packaging. Once PFAS reaches the water table, it is, it will continue to spread for miles in all directions and will eventually enter our bodies when we inadvertently consume contaminated water or products. This is a part of a class action litigation. Not joining this means that we did absolutely nothing out of this, and this costs us nothing to join it. It's endorsed and encouraged by the Municipal League General Counsel for us to register the city and the water system in this multi-district litigation. I need a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brooke.
No.
Councilmember Rubel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-09 passes, thank you, council. Resolution 2023-10 is on, next on the agenda, would you read the title, please?
A resolution authorizing the submittal of an application for Arkansas Community and Economic Development Program grant funds to the state of Arkansas.
This is what I was talking about earlier, our chance to apply for $500,000 in developmental block grants, and at the same time, go to A and R D about low-interest loans or grant to finish pulling all the rest of the houses off.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call, please.
Councilmember Rubel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
And Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-10 passes, thank you, council. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2023-11, read title, please.
A resolution accepting the donation of real property from Wesley Kyle Kendall, commonly referred to as 601 Cook Street, Moore, Arkansas.
Mr. Kendall contacted us and worked through with Mr. Lacy. He wants to donate this 2.2 acres to us off of Cook Street, primarily because he needs to get rid of it for personal reasons. There is some back taxes that are owed, about $500, I put in the, in the resolution, up to 1,000, because I'm not sure if there's some, you know, some fees or whatever associated with that. Do we need this little piece of property, 2.2 acres? Not in particular, but it's being offered to us at a, a good cost, it is next to a pump station, potentially we could sell it later on, potentially we could use it for some other, but, let's see. Now, I have, I have gone through a title company, we're requesting a title search.
If approved, if approved tonight...
But which area here is it?
Turn your mic on.
I was wondering if it's a good piece of property for like a nature area, water, like walking trails, green space.
You know what could possibly be, possibly a community garden.
Oh, yeah.
Two acres.
Right. I mean, there's, there's possibilities.
And I was trying to figure out where...
In that corner somewhere, yeah.
On Cook Street.
County data doesn't show it properly, so I don't...
Okay, that's what the problem I was having is, it's showing it way down Cook Street by Morrison.
But yes, it could be a community garden area, that's a good, that's a good possibility.
And a green space.
It is a green space.
I say we take it.
In case you didn't hear what I said, I have requested a title company do a title search on it. If the title search doesn't come back clear, then I'm not signing anything. I mean, that's just, but if it comes back clear, then with the authorization of this resolution, we'll sign it.
I make a motion.
And pay for the back taxes.
Yes. Make a motion contingent on the clear, the clear title.
So we have a motion contingent on the clear title, we have a second to that?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second to that. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
And Councilmember Rubel.
Yes.
And Council Resolution 2023-11 is approved. Next up is Resolution 2023-12, read the title, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to use one or more of the below-listed engineering firms for engineering services.
Council, this is the same thing, different day, different whatever, just engineering firms.
Make a motion to approve.
Yes, all right. Second.
Somebody's ready to go home. Make a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember Brooke.
Yes.
Councilmember Rubel.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-12 was approved, thank you, council. Next up on the agenda is TAP RTP Workshop. We have a opportunity through RDOT, it's a call for projects through the transportation alternative program, which is our, underneath that is our Safe Routes to School programs, and some other things. What I'd like to do is have a workshop where we gather and talk about that, and look at maps, and look where we, if we want to go to Safe Routes to School route, then where we want the next Phase Five to go. If we want to look at some other projects under these programs, we'll have a chance to discuss that in a workshop. So, my suggestion is April 10th, I put down a third, that's next week, and that's just too soon. April 10th at 6:30, what's that look like on y'all's calendars? It's a Monday night.
Good for me.
Okay, and if you can attend, I mean, if you can't attend, it's, it's a workshop. So let's just go ahead, I'm going to mark April 10th, 6:30 as a TAP RTP workshop, and we'll have a chance to see what, what it entails, what's allowed, and then if we, you know, if we want to continue, like I said, with the Safe Routes to School project, where do you want the next set of sidewalks to go. Next on the agenda is, we have a lot of old stuff in, in the, in the City Hall, there's a picture, and that's just some of it. We'd like to hold a yard sale for city property that we can, can get rid of. Prior to having an actual yard sale, we'll have to have an inventory, which is no big deal, but these things, we're not using them, there's a lot of, there's some electronics that we're not using anymore. Did you see yourself on TV?
Yes.
Okay. Anyway, I need approval to, one, to get rid of these furniture and whatever else that we need, that we don't need, like, like, there's two different buffers that don't work.
You said electronics, what, what kind of electronics?
Some, we have a couple of printers, we have copiers. Now, computers, no, laptops, no, because, no, because they have hard drives and that. We take them to the electronic thing, and they get rid of, you know, not doing that.
My question is, will the dumpsters still be here after 2:00 on Sunday?
This is not, this is not a dumpster thing. This is not a spring cleanup.
Right, but whatever's left after your yard sale, you're going to keep, or you want to get rid of?
We'll get rid of them, but we can take them up to 645.
So will the dumpsters still be here?
No, we can take them up there.
Okay.
Yeah, we, if whatever's left over, we say we're just not going to keep, or give away, or whatever, we can dispose of it.
Okay.
We have an account.
Easily, that's what I was trying to say.
Yeah, 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 we can, most of the stuff, I mean, it's going to be relatively inexpensive or free, you know, to folks or whatever. I mean, you can see in the picture, there's some, the, the old benches that used to be in here, things like that.
I need an office chair for my child.
There you go. Come see us. All right, I need approval, motion to approve this event?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you. All right, let's run through State of the City report. I'm not going to read the whole entire thing. Some are wanting to get home, I get that. But let me just run through a few things here, and especially for those who are watching online. State of the City report, first of all, will be posted to the website tomorrow, it'll be available to everybody, once you have, each of you have been provided a copy. We look at the State of the City report, let's look at the population growth. As you know, we had a 48.8% increase in census from 2000 to 2020. Our estimated census now is 6,646, which is about a 9% increase since the census, which runs about 3% per year, which is what our growth rate is expected to be, according to Metro Plan, so we're right there. As we keep growing, that's a good thing. If we look at financials for the city, we end the general, general fund net incomes ends at $2,683,164 for the year. So we're, we're doing good, as you can tell by the previous years, income's down a little bit, expenses are also down, but, but general, the net income is up. And there's more detail about this, obviously, in the written. And in that lap, you'll notice that the county sales tax is up tremendously from $743,021 to $990,000 in 2022. We get a share of the county sales tax based off our population, and when our population increased with the census, it went up tremendously. Plus, when there's more and more retail going into the county, and more and more people shopping in the county, such as, you know, when Cabot gets a new restaurant, or a new whatever, or Atwood's, or whatever, and we shop there, the entire county, we share in that sales tax. So shop Lono County, shop Ward first, can't shop there, shop Austin, but shop Lono County. It helps all of us. City sales tax is up a little bit to $8,600,862,000. We've said this before, several years ago, the state, or the US Supreme Court changed the law that allowed cities and counties and to tax internet sales. Every time you buy something from Amazon, and I buy a lot, and deliver to my house, we get the sales tax. If you buy at a big box store, if you go to Lowe's and buy a new refrigerator and have it delivered to your house, the point of, point of delivery, sales tax applies, and we get that. So, city sales tax is up pretty good, and it continues to rise, we're, we're good financially. And if you look at the financial statements that are attached to the State of the City report, you'll notice that the general fund balance is at 3,000, 3,460,000 with no bond debt, the street fund balance is 586,000 with no bond debt, and the water sewer system net income is 442,000, and we have a bond debt of $10 million, we paid off in 2056 if we continue paying as normal. But we don't pay as normal, we pay more, and also, we have, by law, and by bond rules, had to put X amount back into a, a fund that at some point in time will equal out the amount that the bond is due, and they'll call it, and we'll pay it off, so it won't go out in 2056. But if you looked at the, go back and look at the debt that the school system is carrying, and some of those other school systems carrying, we're not doing too bad. Some first, as you know, the intersection, first traffic light, that was a good first. The first EV charging station right here in City Hall, there'll be others, as we all know. And the first, like I told Dr. Thurman, our exclusive playground was also a first for the city, but I anticipate more of those as we move forward. State of the City is outstanding or excellent, however you want to say it, it's just good. Like I said, this report will be posted on the website, each of you have a copy. If you have any questions about what is in there, please let me know, or say if one of your constituents has a question, please let me know. Moving forward with my mayor's report, be very quickly, because starts four, we're still waiting on RDOT to release the project, the meter replacement project, we've expanded some of the ARPA money out of that, we have the, some of the collector items that are needed for the project and the software. Unified Development Ordinance, the staff is reviewing, fact is, we're meeting on, and I think I've sent you all a calendar event for April 12th, the staff and the planning commission's going to meet, and you're invited to and encouraged to attend, to discuss what the staff has found in the UDO and recommends changes to the UDO. And then we'll move that forward to Metro Plan, who will make the changes for us on their, it's in their, it's not a Word document, it's something else, they have to do it. And then, prior to planning commission approving it to move forward to the council, there'll be public hearings. So the public have an opportunity to talk about and to see the UDO, and what it's going, how it's going to affect them going forward, and once the planning commission approves it moving forward, then it comes to the city council for approval. The license plate reader camera system is still on hold, waiting RDOT's approval for where we want to put them. We're still working on a new abatement issue at the Fourth Street, and I will tell you that I've instructed my code enforcement to get aggressive this month to tell folks by letter, by flyer, by door hanger, that the April 29th spring cleanup, get your stuff, get in there, because after that, we're going to start cracking down. We're going to do some, some heavier notifications and citations when we get to that point, try to get some more things cleaned up. But April 29th, we're trying to get people to get their stuff. The Consolidate 911 Center, there's no, been, no change on that, the county officials really need to get together and talk about that, and we will. The Connect Two First, as we talked about, is continuing to lay in fiber across the city, and someone's being hooked up. My next virtual town meeting would be 18th at 6:30. I have the documentation in for a water, wastewater rate study. Act 605 requires this rate study to be done every five years, we haven't had one since 2018, we need to take a look at this. It would be several months before they get the rate study done, they're behind because of Act 605 and everybody else is wanting... It would be several months before they get the rate study done. They're behind because of Act 605, and everybody else is wanting these too. By law, on the sewer side, there has to be public hearings before there's any rate increase. Let me just remind you, those who aren't aware of Act 605, whatever the, the rate study comes back, and it's done by the Arkansas Rural Water Association, which is an approved rate study organization by the state, and they do it for free. Other organizations charge. Anyway, whatever they come back with has to be implemented by state law now. But we'll see what that entails. Spring cleanups, April 29th. If you want to come out and help, please do. Volunteers are needed. And just a reminder, the Great Escape, Great American Eclipse Event, April 8th of 2024. We are planning now. Fact is, I just signed a contract for 20 porta potties for there. There is a clause in the contract that we can cancel or reduce it prior to the event. But I wanted to go ahead and get online with a, with a porta potty place, because we're talking about doing an RV park, a temporary RV park, in the, in a park, in a sports complex.
Has there been any word? I've read somewhere that Arkansas State Tourism was coming out and plotting places and telling you how many RVs you can have.
I haven't heard that they're doing that. I've heard that Airbnb's are already booked for that time period. Hotels can't book for a year out, but now they're on a couple, in a week or so, they'll be available to.
I read that Arkansas State Tourism was doing surveys for RV-
I'll look into it.
And then-
Mike.
Putting it on their website that you had those available after they come out and told you how many you could fit wherever you was wanting to put them.
Well, I'll take a look at it because I was unaware of that, but thank you. That's our intent. There's a meeting, April 10th, informational meeting at the Veterans Park Event Center in Cabot, 10:00 AM. All are invited. That's the park, that's the tourism. People are going to be out there to talk about this. This is going to be a big thing. They estimate that everybody's city in this swath coming through the area will double with tours. So we need to be ready. We're talking about with Michelle Parks Recreation, we are, we are gearing up. We're going to try and do movies. If, if we do an RV park in the, in the park, then we're going to have to have, we're going to talk about doing a movies in the park for like Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, and Sunday night. Concession stand open. I've already talked to the chief. We'll probably have a patrol unit parked out there through this event. Try to do it up right. I know Cabot is, is gearing up for multiple events in their city and where they can put people. It's, uh, it's an economic boom, and it's going to be a nightmare.
Do we have a place we can do a dump or sewage?
Actually, yes. Bruce and I have talked, and that there's a lift station right there as you go into the park. We're going to retrofit that to do an RV dump.
Could do.
Yep. And that may become permanent. We'll advertise it. That's available. You know, people pull in there and they have to call a number. We'll go over there and help them and, you know, charge them. They'll be, they'll be free. No, there'll be, there'll be a slight fee for it. There should be. But, you know, we, we have some time. We have not a lot of time. It's a year away. And, but yeah, we're looking at everything. And if you have other ideas, please let us know. Another thing that is going to help us, and I don't know if y'all saw this. This is an artist rendition of the Unity Health Hospital Complex that's going in off of Highway 38 exit at a Cabot. The New Cabot Exit. As you come, if you look at the picture, if you were coming off the interstate northbound to the right, like you're going down the Big Red, the hospital complex would be on your left, as you see, and then doctor's offices across the street and all kinds of stuff. This is going to be a major boom for this area. This is going to accelerate, I believe, economic development in the area. Down 38, additional subdivision probably, but certainly some additional incentive for commercial development. Down 38, down 367. I'm not sure what timeline is. I know that Cabot got a $1.9 million economic development grant for infrastructure improvements in that area. Do what?
Yeah, but we'll backtrack this up a little bit.
Well, I think the exit was put there, and then this came, I don't know which came first.
The chicken.
The chicken. And then I-
I think Unity bought that after the exit was there.
I think so, yeah. And if you, they're also on the other side of 38, over the overpass, that new proposed road by the county will go out there and do, go to, connect to Greystone. In that area.
Olive Garden.
There's been rumors of Olive Gardens before, and they've turned to Big Falls. All right. All right. I just wanted, I don't know if you saw that in the paper or online or whatever, but I just wanted to, and, and again, it's, it's not, it's not Ward, but it's regional, and it's going to benefit us tremendously. So.
Maybe I can get a job closer to home.
There you go.
Mayor, got a question about the cleanup, water cleanup thing.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if Mr. Chapman, did you ask about the hazmat waste portion, or was it?
We, that was Eric, I think.
You didn't get back with that?
Well, we're not, yeah, we couldn't get anybody, well, don't say we couldn't, but we, we're not going to check. It's going to be in June. Hazmat and the shredding event will be in June. Yep.
Will be, uh, they take mattresses?
Yeah. All right, do we have any public comment? Okay. All right, some announcements. April 8th Extravaganza out of the City Park from 1:00 to 3:00, put on by Grace Community Church. April 12th, like I said earlier, the Joint Staff Planning UDO Meeting at 6:30. Y'all are invited. I put a calendar event. Please join. City Council Meeting is at April 17th. There'll be a public hearing on a rezoning request from R1 to C1 on April 24th. And then Planning Commission Meeting on April 24th at 7:00. Spring cleanup, like we talked about, is April 29th. We're going to have Movies in the Park on May 6th. We're going to show ET. Should be fun. And then Fishing Derby is May 13th, and May 13th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. That's always a good time. And again, if you all want to volunteer for things like that, please do so. Oh, and here's the map of the, um, Great Eclipse. And that's all we have on the agenda for tonight.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion, second to adjourn. All those who say aye?
Aye.
And go home. Thanks, then. Next meeting is April 17th.